If you didn't go get it right now.
Exactly.
Good evening. I'd like to recognize the Simsbury Board of Education Regular Meeting, May 28, 2013. I call to order, and with that, we have a lot of recognitions this evening to present, so.
We do. A lot of faces in the crowd, which is always exciting, very busy, end of the year. We have several recognitions this evening. The first is the Cabe Student Leadership Award, and we have representatives from both the high school and the middle school, so I am going to turn things over to Mr. Sullivan. Or, Mr. White, want to start?
I'll start.
Wow. I mean, if Neil's going to defer, I would take advantage of it. Very good.
I'm going to go for it.
Excellent.
So, good evening, everybody. We have a few students that we'd like to recognize this evening, too, from Henry James. For the Cabe Award, I first like to recognize Brenna Pallett, who's a student here from Henry James. Brenna is joined this evening by her parents, Mr. and Mrs. Pallett, and I'd just like to share with you, in the words of her teachers, why she was recognized to receive this award. Brenna Pallett is a consummate optimist. She is willing to accept challenges and always rises to meet them. A bright and cheerful personality has been a welcome presence in her classrooms this year. Brenna's extracurricular activities are rather impressive. She is a participant in this year's school production of Little Mermaid. She is a member of the band and the chorus, and she is a talented gymnast and dancer as well. In spite of all of her after-school activities, she is constantly prepared for class, and her work is of the highest quality. She clearly has learned the skill of organizing her time. Additionally, Brenna is a positive role model in class. She is kind to students and faculty all around her. She looks for and consequently brings out the best in those around her. She certainly deserves to be recognized for her many excellent characteristics. Congratulations to Brenna. The next student we'd like to recognize this evening is Tyrus Perdue.
Hi, Tyrus.
Tyrus is joined this evening by his parents. Tyrus is an eighth grader at Henry James. Tyrus was new to Henry James as a seventh grader, but quickly acclimated to school culture. As an eighth grader, he is an avid member of our student council. Around the holidays, he helped to facilitate the Holiday Giving Project, through which the middle school raised funds and purchased toys for families in need. Also, as a member of the student council, he helped to organize school-wide dances that contribute to our positive school climate. In the community at large, Tyrus is an active member in the local Boy Scout troop. Academically, Tyrus is a solid student. He participates in classes and works well with others. A leader among his peers, Tyrus consistently follows the Henry James way, exemplifying the characteristics of respectfulness, kindness, responsibility, fairness, and trustworthiness. Congratulations to Tyrus.
And Tyrus and Brenna, stand up here. I have two awards from you on behalf of Cabe, also the president of Cabe, and we are very pleased to honor these awards to both of you, to Brenna and to Tyrus. And this is really important because your leadership qualities define who you are and your character, and you are now in a very astute group with other leaders across the state, teenagers like you, so this is something that I hope you are, you know, pretty well or have a very prominent place. And I'll read for you. It's about leadership, and we're very happy the Kennedy Association of Boards event to award the Student Leadership Award to Brenna for distinguished leadership in school activities and daily life. And this is for you, Brenna. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good. And Tyrus, the same for you. Here we are. Oop, I have the wrong one. I'm sorry. There we go. Thank you. Thought I could get away with it without the glass. Sorry about that, Tyrus. I apologize. But again, Tyrus, leadership, the Connecticut Association of Boards events awards the Student Leadership Award to Tyrus Perdue for distinguished leadership in school activities and daily life. So again, congratulations to you. Are your parents here this evening? Either one of you? Here. Congratulations to the parents also. You must be very proud of the children. You must be very proud, Mr. White. Congratulations, and good luck.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask my students to come forward. Emily and Chris. So, we have two fabulous high school recipients for the Cabe Awards and Student Leadership Awards. And I always, when I go to select this particular award, I go to a lot of different areas in our school, from theater to sports to student government, and start to talk to the adults about who are the members of the senior class that really stand out as leaders in their respective rooms and just the kind of kids that inspire others. And I have two great students to introduce to you tonight. You know Emily here, who has, of course, as a student, it's really two things on her leadership resume, if you will, being your student representative, one of the senior representatives to the Board of Education, and serving in that capacity for the first half of the year as a voice of her peers with a tough seat to fill sometimes, that you're in the public eye and mixed with adults and making important commentary about what's happening at Simsbury High and sharing in the board meetings. But also, Emily was one of the really founding leaders of our, hopefully you've seen over the last couple of years, our Unified Theater Program, as students modeled off of Unified Sports where students with disabilities perform in skits with their peers and really put together a couple of terrific shows over the last few years, and Emily's been part of that. And she is going to tell you a little, maybe introduce your guest, and tell a little bit about what you're doing for next year.
Sure. Well, my mom's here tonight to support me, and next year, I'm going to be attending Clark University. I'm very excited. And I'm probably going to be pursuing something in social sciences, although I'm not completely sure yet.
Congratulations.
One more, and then I'll let you do the certificates. This is Chris Hauser. Chris is really the, if you talk about Simsbury High Theater in the past year, this is somebody who, everybody that you talk to will tell you, this is the shining example of a student who contributes all that he can to that program. In addition to being a fabulous student in the theater, he has directed a one-act play for our Fall Festival. The principal thought it was the best of the one-act plays in particular. You'll recognize him, this year's performances, he was rooster in Annie, and if you saw Rosencrantz and Guildenstern a few weeks ago, he played Hamlet. So, he's had major roles in those productions, but more importantly, he is, everybody that you talk to, from the adults who work in the theater to his peers, will tell you that he's just a part of the troupe, and he makes it work as a team member, and just the nicest kid we have going in the senior class, and he's just a perfect kid. So, we also salute Chris Hauser, and I'm going to have him introduce his parents and tell you about them.
All right. So, this is my mom and dad. So, I want to thank them for coming here tonight. And I'm planning to attend Ithaca College next year to study music education, so I'll be a teacher, like many, if not all of you. So, yeah, I'm very excited about that.
Great. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Very good. So, again, yeah, this is really a special, to those of you in the audience and those of you at home, this is really a special award. This is the 17th year that Cabe is presenting these awards to our student leaders across the state. And I think in all 17 years, you've always been on the boards, obviously, and, but they have history of it, and Mr. Sullivan, you probably know, every year, you've been principal for 10 years or so, we've always, always given an award to high school students and to our middle school students. So, this is really very, very special, that we are in that category of defining leadership of our students and able to award our student leadership awards. And as you know, you know, the Student Leadership Award is a great, a great award to be presented. You deserve it. It's an honor. Tyrus and Brenna, I hope you see the high school students here, and they're receiving the awards. And I know you also, once you, you know, get to high school, you too may also be another recipient of this award, you know, as you continue on with your activities and things. So, we do admire, we admire the Henry James students, and we admire with you high school students that are graduating, and we know you're going to continue on with, in college, with, you know, further activities and more leadership qualities to come. So, with that, I present to you also the Leadership Award. The Connecticut Association of Boards events awards Student Leadership Award to Christopher Hauser at Simsbury High School, and well-deserved award. Congratulations. Emily, this is really a very special word for a very special person who spent quite a bit of time together, and not only as you've been a member of a student rep on this board, but also have been at very many educational activities with the community. So, this is a very special award, very well-deserved award for someone who I know has a lot to offer, much more to offer, as you get into college and look forward to being in this room from there. So, again, leadership, Connecticut Association of Boards of Ed awards Student Leadership Award to Emily Donoghue for the leadership activities and services. Thank you.
All right. I'm going to slide right in. I'm going to have Kyle stand up here. This particular award, he should be joined by his partner, Laura Yablecki, as our two Scholar-Athlete winners for this year. Laura is competing in the first round CIAC softball playoff game, so she was not able to make it to our board meeting today. But the CAS Scholar-Athlete Awards, obviously, we at Simsbury High School highlight the scholar part of that, so there's a certain GPA cutoff, but we really look at the top of the class. And then, Mr. Street, the Director of Athletics and Student Activities, and I look over the list for those students who stand out at the top academically, but who have also had a distinguished athletic career. Laura's not here, but I'll talk about her first. Varsity athlete, I think, all four years in three sports, in volleyball, hockey, and softball. Just one of the really accomplished female athletes that we've had at Simsbury High School with an unbelievable record. And she is off to the University of Alabama next year. Kyle is here as another three seasons, four years, 12 sports played, in addition to being a soccer player for a number of years, ran cross-country this year, ran, did cross-country skiing for a few years back in the day, and then into our track, and has also been one of the outstanding members of our track team. You'll remember the 4x800 team that set all sorts of records last year. Kyle was the one non-senior in that relay team that distinguished itself across the state and New England, and keep going. So, Kyle is an unbelievable sportsman, a person of unbelievable character. He made, I think, one of the really heroic choices that I saw this year, when you're a member of the varsity soccer team already as a junior at Simsbury High School, but he knew that his future competing collegiately was in running, and he stepped away from being a senior, I have no doubt he might have been a captain of that varsity soccer team, and said, "I'm going to turn my efforts to where my future competition is going to be," and ran cross-country with, to great accomplishment. But it really struck me as how hard that was to do and handle it. So, it tells you what you need to know about Kyle and his focus. His parents are here, too. He could do an introduction and tell you a little bit about them.
I'm joined by my parents, Marion and Phil. Looking good as always. I'll be headed off next year to Maris College in Fickiputra, New York. I will run for their track team, and I plan to send a minor in Spanish. I'm not sure what my major's going to be this year.
So, and proof of the award is arrived today in my office, which is the Connecticut Association of Schools and the CIAC, who sponsor it. This is Laura and Kyle receiving their award that night, and a couple of weeks later, we had a great banquet, great company that night, so I'm going to give that to mom so that she holds on to it. But that's Kyle Hubner. Congratulations.
Kyle, and all your accomplishments.
And we have one more Simsbury High accolade to hand out. I'm going to ask Matt Shaw to step forward here. This is not a senior. This is a junior at Simsbury High School, and Matt is in extremely elite company. I am pleased to tell you, those of you who have been on the board for a few years, we have another Governor's Scholar in the state of Connecticut, and Matt Shaw received that distinction. To explain to you how elite that is, here's how it works. Each high school principal, and there's about 170 of us in the state of Connecticut, is allowed to nominate just one member of the junior class based on criteria of academic achievement, PSAT scores, looking at things like CAPS scores, but ultimately, the biggest part of it is that the student will then sit for a timed essay to write. So, 170 principals all pick their best, and then only 30 of those 170 will ultimately be selected to be Governor's Scholars. Matt was one of those 30. I'm proud to say it's the third year in a row that Simsbury High School had one of those 30. I'm six for nine in my years as principal. Not that I'm counting, but when you get to nominate pretty fabulous students like Matt, good things continue to happen for Simsbury High School. Matt is co-captain of our debate team outside of the classroom. He is about as accomplished a pianist as you can imagine, accompanied our musical, was All-State Jazz pianist last year. If you have not heard him play, you should. He is truly amazing and really a great honor for us. I will tell you this also, I've been to a number of these Governor's Scholars luncheon. It's the first time we actually got the governor. And Governor Malloy did make an appearance to congratulate all of the scholars, so terrific event about a week and a half ago. Matt Shaw, ladies and gentlemen, your governor.
You have your family with you, too, right, Matt?
Yeah, it's everybody.
Yep. I got my mom's back here, my two brothers. My dad's going to be here today, but.
Great. Congratulations.
Congratulations to that.
All right. Deb Manning is back there somewhere, I think. Right? Okay. Deb is one of our very talented business teachers, and she's here tonight to help us recognize our future business leaders of America in the work that they've done at both the state conference, and we have some people moving on to the national conference.
That's right. That's right.
Welcome, Deb.
Thank you. Good evening. We have a really phenomenal group of future business leaders of America at the high school. We have 78 members, I think, this year, and we had about 30 that went on to compete at the state level. So, we're very fortunate to have some of our winners here tonight, and so, let me just see if I can introduce them all. We have, let's see, who we have, right here. Let's just start here. I won't go by my list. We had a lot of last-minute cancellations. It must have been a lot of tests to study for tomorrow. But Jacob Gatner, the board knows him already, he competed with Patrick Long, who's right next to him, in the Global Business Event, and both of you, in that team event, you took a test, and then you had a presentation to do at the conference. You came in second place on that event, so that was a wonderful feat. Jacob, as well, ran for state office and was elected state treasurer, so he'll be serving for the 2013 to '14 school year. And can I say the other part, too? He is going on to national, not to compete, but he is running for national treasurer. And, should I?
Sure.
Okay.
Should I say this?
Yeah, I might as well. He's running unopposed.
Oh.
So, it looks like it's a shoo-in, but he still came amazing, right? And that is just, I think they all heard about Jake for treasurer, and they're scared to run against you. So, that's amazing. So, that's a wonderful thing. So, okay, so right next to we have Danielle Osborne, and Danielle and Grace Angus entered the Business Plan Event. Grace and, both Grace and Danielle were in my entrepreneurship class, and in that class, one of the things that we do, a highlight of that course, is to come up with a concept for a new business idea and to actually write the plan. So, it was how many pages, Danielle?
30.
Oh, yeah. Okay. I think you had to kind of limit it to the 30 for the event, because I do have the criteria. But you entered your plan, and you came in fifth place, and I think that should have been closer up to the top, because it was a great idea. I really loved the plan that you had. And so, that was writing the plan and then actually going and presenting that. And then, to her left, we have Henry Tortalot. And Henry, as a sophomore, okay, you had, you entered not one, but two events, okay? You came in first place in the Introduction to Business class, and the other event was an open event that you elected to take as you got there, and that was, what, it was Healthcare Administration?
Hospitality Management.
Oh, Hospitality Management. That's right. And first place in that as well. Okay, so he's a double whammy. And going on to compete nationally for the Introduction to Business event, so that was great. To his left, we have another duo. So, Eric Klopowski competed in the Business Math Event, which is a test that included some simple interest calculations and then some more difficult calculations. So, there was quite a bit that you needed to do as a timed test. Came in second place in that event, going on to national to compete. And then you also did the, let me get this right, the Healthcare Administration test, and that was a first place as well. And that was an open event. So, two, we really sweep when we go Simsbury rules, right? Rich Hill's not listening tonight, right? And then we have Tyler Bailey. And Tyler Bailey took Technology Concepts and came in second in that event. You're going on to national as well. And what's the other event you plan to enter in there?
Texting.
They actually have a texting event.
Texting speed.
And since then, they do that after. You won't be recognized at the conference for that, but that's the morning when we're waiting for our plane. We had to take a later departure so that we could stay for the national officer breakfast for Jake. And so, they'll be the texting champions going on. Do we have anybody else that came in advance? We have lots of other awards, and I'll just mention them. They couldn't be here tonight. There was another Business Plan, Jessica Lippinen, and Caroline Smith entered that. They came in first in Business Plan. They were in the entrepreneurship class, too. And Caroline is going to be going on to national with that. Business Ethics, we had a first-place team, Maxwell Skalski. He was here last year. He won the public speaking event for the freshman. James Schaefer and Henry Hermson was on that team as well. So, they did great. And then, let's see, we had a third place in public speaking, John Gally. He's going on to national as well. And then there was Business Presentation, Shannon McIntyre and Aaron Gallagher, and they took third. And Accounting One, we had Graham Lowry. He had fourth place. Joey Dunn, Personal Finance, came in fifth. And then we had a Outstanding Chapter Silver Award for all their accomplishments. The group was recognized. And our president, Shannon McIntyre, won the Who's Who in Connecticut FBLA distinction, as well as the prestigious Victoria Award that was named after a former business educator. So, we had twice the, twice the seat at state, and we're looking to have further accomplishments at nationals.
Deb, when is the national?
National is, it's going to be in Anaheim, California this year, June 26. I'm looking for that, that day. July 1st. And that's safe and sound. Lots of trophies.
Great. Well, thank you for your efforts, and thank you for representing us so well. That's unbelievable. Thank you.
Thanks.
And we'd like to recognize the parents that are in the hall, who is a little bit tight here, but thank you also for all the work.
We have one last individual we would like to recognize this evening. Is Rich Curtis here? I saw him before. Rich opposes any recognition.
He doesn't. Here he is.
Ah. We know you don't like the limelight. Rich is one of our very talented teachers and leaders. He's the department supervisor for Social Studies at Simsbury High School. I'm going to ask Aaron to provide some background on his recognition this evening.
I'll give a little bit. It's wonderful to recognize all the students, but it's also just as wonderful to be able to recognize a teacher for outstanding accomplishments. And back in March, we were notified by the Simsbury Chapter of the Daughters of American Revolution and the Abigail Phelps Chapter, and they told us that Rich had won the state award, and he is in the running, I don't know if you've heard yet, for the national award, for the 2013 Outstanding American History Teacher of the Year. So, very, very much appreciative of the work that you do for the students in Simsbury, and just so dedicated to the work that you do. So, I'll toss it over to Neil. You have, you were able to join him.
Well, yeah, I hope you're familiar with Rich's work. It's really, some recognition has continued to come in since his students put together the Martin Luther King History Project over.
A year and a half ago, really.
So, it's been a little while now. But what those who are in, day in and day out at Simsbury High School know that Rich is a teacher right now. His primary course is AP US Government and Politics. And that course, it's not an accident that when he started teaching it, we saw the enrollment grow and grow to beyond the sections that Rich could teach anymore. So, he now partners with a couple of other teachers. This year, in the senior class, I want to say that 175 members of our senior class are enrolled in AP US Government and Politics. That starts because a superb teacher starts to do something great, and word spreads. And Rich has been doing that. He predates me by a couple of years at Simsbury High School, but we've been contemporaries for a long time, and that's his reputation at Simsbury High School, that he's a teacher where kids just want to take the course. And these accolades are not surprising to any of us. He's embarrassed by all of them. But when the chapter got the local recognition, and then we had to support it with letters talking about him from myself and Aaron and a few others, and the president of the chapter, they don't call, what did they call the moderator, the something of the chapter, the head of the chapter, he's not a president, called and said, "He's going to win the state award. I know it." And she was prescient, because in fact, that's what happened about six months later. So, obviously, very proud, as Aaron said, very proud of our students, but we're proud of our teachers who are recognized, too. So, congratulations to Rich.
Well, okay, yeah. First, just thanks to the board and everyone for their support over the past few years. It's been so nice to have the kind of support that we have for each project. And thank you for the technology that we have in our schools, because I think we have some of the best technology probably in any school in history. And projects like this one really are all about the use of technology. So, you've made, whether you know it or not, you've made it possible for a lot of these really nice projects to take place, and thank you for that. And, yeah, we had a ceremony in Windsor, and it was a wonderful, wonderful ceremony. Obviously, I've never been to one of those meetings before, so it was new to me. And it's a, it's a very nice group that tries to keep America's history alive, and I give them a lot of credit for that. That's something that is, something that I agree with, you do a wonderful job of that. So, it was nice to be recognized by a group like that. So, thanks very much, and. Thank you, Rich.
Great time of year to honor our students and also our faculty and staff. So, very good. All right. Moving on to the next portion of the agenda. Public audience, we have.
You don't have to feel you need to stay for the regular. You're welcome to, but we understand and won't take it personally.
More and more exciting.
Thank you very much.
I was getting used to them in the audience.
Michael Gussler trapped.
And there's more seating.
All righty. Thank you very much for clearing the. With that, I'll start over. We now are in public audience portion of the meeting. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the board, please state your name and address, and seeing no one in the audience, after Mr. Curtis cleared. Anyway, now we're on to Board Communications, Board of Administrative Communications, and we will start with Kristen.
Okay. Well, the art show is tonight through Thursday, and I got to actually go down today, and it's really good. So, I'd recommend going if you have time. And then Friday is Senior Prom, and then next Thursday is the Physics Fair, the AP English Classes Poetry Slam, and the Last Chorus Concert of the Year.
Very good. Very good. Winding down, winding down your year. Susan.
Nothing tonight.
Tom.
Nothing tonight.
Todd.
I'm all set.
All set?
Mike.
All set. Thank you.
Eric.
I do. I have two things. I'd like to just tell you about our early release day last week, our professional development. We actually, all of our principals in all seven buildings held a third of five workshops around our teacher evaluation plan. This one focused on the Category One teacher, our teaching standards, the Simsbury Teaching Standards, the objective of the session, the three-hour session, were for all of our certified teachers to become familiar with our new rubrics, our Teaching Standard rubrics, and the ability to self-assess themselves. So, we have two more sessions that are left. We have two in June at our faculty meeting, June 4, and then another session on our full PD day. And our principals have been leading that work with their faculties. So, at the end of the year, we will have had five sessions where we're trying to have everybody become much more familiar with the teacher evaluation. everybody become much more familiar with the Teacher Evaluation Plan in preparation for the kickoff next year. The second item that I have, and I'll let Brian help me out with this a little bit. We have a co-curricular activity, a pre-engineering program called Seapurge, where we had three students that went to Nationals in Indianapolis, I believe, and they came in third place from the middle school. Really exciting for them to have that opportunity to showcase their expertise and actually receive a great big trophy that's in the office at the middle school.
That's right. That's right. Yeah, our kids did very, very well. They placed out of six potential places, state level, 1, 3, 4, 5, 6. And so the only two teams representing the entire state of Connecticut nationally both came from Henry James. The second-place entry was the Boy Scouts entry that bowed out and was unable to go to Indianapolis, which made our second team eligible. And that third-place distinction was nationally. That was out of, I believe, almost all 50 states, including Puerto Rico. So literally hundreds of teams from around the United States in this engineering competition, which was essentially like an underwater robotics competition. And our kids did exceptionally well, so we're very proud of them.
And Brian Foreman was the teacher that leads that particular co-curricular activity. So he puts a lot of time and effort into that. So we certainly appreciate that work, too.
Nothing at this time.
Bert? One bit of timely news that we wanted to share was that Governor Malloy on Friday, I believe, announced a school security competitive grant program. It's a reimbursement grant program. The first round is $5 million, and they intend to have two more $5 million rounds within the next year. Priority will be given to those districts that don't have, you know, some of the basic items that we've been lucky enough to install. In fact, we did receive state reimbursement grants about four to five years previously that helped to reimburse some of those purchases that we had made previously for door buzzers and things of that nature. So that will be a 40% rate of reimbursement, and we were fortunate enough to hear today confirmation that our Classroom Locks project will be eligible, so.
That's really good news.
That's very good news.
Look at other potential items that might also be eligible, but those are definite. And obviously, we've already got that contract, getting ready for that to start very soon.
And what was the cost of the locks, the total cost?
The bid was just over $120,000, so it'd be 40% of that.
Very good news. Very good news for District and Town. Very good. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Bert. Two quick things. Had an opportunity this morning, most of the day, to attend what was called the Connecticut Superintendent Summit. We took a team. Erin went. Sue attended. Neil was able to go, and Scott Baker, the principal of Terrafill. And many of the organizations involved in education, from the State Department to CAPE, CAPS, CAS, Center for School Change, all are coming together to develop this network to support school districts and support leaders as they kind of grapple and wrestle through these reform efforts that we've talked quite a bit about over the course of this year. So they had some workshops for us to attend. It was day one of two days. This group that they're calling LEED, this consortium called LEED, is grant-funded for one year, and will be putting on activities and kind of leadership opportunities for us to attend throughout the year. So we're excited about the opportunity. We have a plan to go back tomorrow. Erin and her team are presenting some information in the morning. That should be great, and we'll go from there. More news to come, but Lydia, you had an opportunity to attend as well. Second piece I just wanted to mention, I stopped by Simsberry High School this evening before the meeting. There was a senior citizen dinner, a pizza dinner, with an opportunity to go through the art show. The art show was amazing. We had a great turnout. I think, Lisa, you know, you're so helpful in supporting those events. We have over 50 seniors, you said, which is a great turnout, and they had an opportunity to see the wonderful artwork that the kids produce, which truly is amazing. If you haven't had an opportunity to stop by, I would highly recommend that.
Good.
That's it.
Very good. All right. And just a quick communication for me. I had the opportunity of presenting the Educator of the Year Award through Chamber of Commerce. Was it last week? Was it last Thursday? Thursdays ago or last?
Two weeks.
Two weeks ago.
Yep.
And Ron Haral was the 2013 awardee this year and recipient of the Chamber of Commerce Award. So it was a very nice luncheon, and his wife was also in honor. And it was a very nice testament to his 21 years of service to Sims Republic Schools. So again, congratulations, Ron, and also even Sue and Matt were also there, so it was very...
A very nice luncheon.
Very nice. Good. All right, we are on to Recommended Actions. Exhibit One in your packet, the minutes of Special Meeting, May 14, 2013. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, motion passes. Approval Exhibit Two in your packet is approval...
With the vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Thank you for the reminder. We are now on to Exhibit Two, Approval of Minutes in May 14, 2013 Regular Meeting. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I just had one. There's a typo on my last name. E-N-A-N. That's it. Everything else look good? You gotta say something, right?
Okay. So noted. So noted in the minutes. Be corrected for next time. All in favor?
Aye.
Who is second?
Mike's second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. All righty, you're on to Exhibit Four in your packet under Information and Reports, School Climate Updates.
We have to do Personnel.
Personnel. We're moving back. Moving so quickly here. All right. Exhibit Three in your packet, Personnel.
Thank you, Lydia. I have two recommendations for consideration for the board this evening. The first is the resignation of Chris Tranberg. Chris has been with us for 11 years in the district, most recently as Assistant Principal at the high school. So I would recommend that the Board of Education move to accept the resignation of Christopher Tranberg effective June 30 of 2013.
Very good.
Some moves.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
The second recommendation for your consideration this evening is a Notice of Intent to Retire. This affects Mark Orsini, who's a math teacher at Simsberry High School. He's been with us currently for 29 years. So I recommend that the Board of Education move to accept the Notice of Intent to Retire of Mark Orsini effective June 30, 2016.
Thank you. Got a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Lydia, I know in the prior board meeting, I had shared the announcement of both Chris and Scott Dunn, but just wanted, once again, with the formal motion, to thank Chris for all his contributions to the district. An amazing, amazing teacher and moving on to do great things, I think, at Avon High School as a new principal there.
Very much. And the board also echoes the sentiments for Chris Tranberg and also for Scott Dunn. Thank you. We are now on to Exhibit Four, Information Reports, Secondary School Climate Updates.
Have you teed that up?
Great. And if I can invite Eileen and Brian White to the table, that would be great.
So it was just two weeks ago that we had a very celebratory example of what's been going on across the district regarding school climate, and we highlighted some of those efforts, particularly at the elementary schools. This evening, we have with us Brian White, Principal at Henry James, as well as Eileen Eustace, Assistant Principal at the high school, to give a glimpse of the great work that's happening with school climate relative to both the middle school and the high school. So we are going to start off, and I'm going to ask Brian to kick us off with Henry James.
Sure. So as I start to conclude my first year as Principal of Henry James, I feel very fortunate to come into a school where there was really already a very well-established positive school climate and really well-established character education program. Many of you, I'm sure, are familiar with it. We call it the HJ Way. And I'll just sort of walk through some of the information you have there on your PowerPoints. Basically, there's five tenants or five foundational principles to the HJ Way: Be respectful, responsible, fair, kind, and trustworthy. We really integrate this message into our approach with students and reinforce it throughout the year in formal settings like school assemblies, but also in less formal, smaller groups. Many of our team leaders, in the course of planning activities with their teams, will often refer to these principles. So we really do try to embed this into everything we do at Henry James, just to reinforce our positive climate. One of the things that we do to publicly recognize student achievement in this regard is what we refer to as our School of Fish. And visually, this makes a pretty powerful statement. If you were to walk through our doors right now, you would see through every hallway of the school, a border of fish. And what's so remarkable about that, and there's literally hundreds, well, at this point, thousands of them, at the beginning of the year, we don't have any fish on the walls. And so over the course of the year, whenever a student is recognized for essentially a good deed or doing the right thing, we recognize that through a fish. And those fish are then displayed through our hallways. And so again, walking through the doors at the end of the year, it's pretty powerful to see just how many good decisions are made on a routine basis by kids at Henry James. One of the things we also do to acknowledge students publicly for being recipients of the Fish Awards, on Fridays during our morning announcements, we recognize those students publicly over the intercom. So it's just a really nice way to positively reinforce our expectations and recognize kids that are making good choices. So we have there just some numbers. As of the 16th of May, 531 individual students have received Fish as of that time. In 7th grade, 257, 274 in 8th grade. We have a breakdown there by gender, which is almost the same, which is pretty interesting, 268 and 263. So that's something we're very happy about. We also had 45 entire classes recognized with Fish. And so it's not uncommon for a class that does a really great job, teachers like to celebrate that publicly and actually award the entire class of Fish, which brings us up to 576. So really a pretty impressive number. And again, I think just evidence of some of the great things going on at Henry James. Another aspect I'd like to showcase this evening is our Leadership Academy. Our school counseling staff does a fantastic job facilitating this group. This is a group of what we would consider to be our peer leaders. They're very involved as role models among our students for our student activities as well as public activities when we open our doors to the community. Things like our open house evenings, different celebrations throughout the years. Our Leadership Academy students are very involved as guides, as helpers. And again, it's just sort of a public face of our student body to represent us. One of the things they're very involved in presently is our orientation programming as we begin to welcome the incoming sixth graders. Leadership Academy students are very hands-on in their involvement. And again, it's just a nice way to welcome our new students to the school. Another point, our after-school clubs and activities. Very impressed with the level of involvement. At Henry James, we have a number of after-school clubs and activities. One of the great things we offer students is the opportunity to actually submit a proposal. And so for students who have an interest, and there's not a club or activity that they can access to pursue that interest, they have the means to actually approach the school administration. We've had two new clubs this year, all driven by student interest and driven by students. So that's something that, it's a really great process. It empowers kids and really lets them, you know, sort of pursue those interests. 47 this year. Total number of student participants, 7,657. And so when you look at the different club offerings and the number of students in each of those clubs, that's how that figure's arrived at. The total number of after-school meetings for all of those clubs collectively, 576. So really an outstanding after-school program, and kids are really connected to our school.
Thank you, Brian. Turn it over to Eileen.
We started the Trojan Code a couple of years ago, and one of the things that we realized a few years ago was that we really didn't have a well-established program at the high school similar to what was at the elementary and the middle school. So when we were offered an opportunity to go through some training through a program called PBIS, which is based on George, who guys work out of UConn. It stands for Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports. And basically what it is, it's an opportunity, they put a framework, they have a framework, and basically we design our own program that fits the needs of our school. And so three years ago now, we went for training. We took a team of 10 people and basically worked on implementing this program. And we're in year two of implementation, and there's three tiers for the program. Tier One is meant to be all of the things that you do to work with school culture and behavior that students will typically respond to. And then Tier Two is where you start to ratchet things up a little bit for students that might be having some, whether it's academic difficulties, behavioral difficulties, lack of connection with school. And then Tier Three would be a much smaller population, usually less than 5%, far fewer in our building. And that's where you put in some other heavy-duty kinds of things, the things that look more like our alternative programs, similar to pathways. So last year, we implemented Tier One, and really that was a focus on just creating a really positive school culture and trying to bring back some of the school spirit that everybody had sort of felt was lacking. So one of the things, and I guess one of the other things I'd like to point out is that we had such tremendous support from the faculty. All of the professional development we did, we spent almost a year working through professional development on this program, making sure everybody was on board, as it also supports the mission of the school as well as our core values and beliefs. So just a grounding statement of behavior in terms of cultivating a positive school culture, that we need that for the foundation at Simsberry High School. That's sort of what we always tried to go back to when we were making decisions in terms of developing this program. We chose three behavioral expectations or three tenants. I don't know how everybody always remembers five, because it's even hard. We finally got to 83% of the faculty can recite all three right off the top of their head. Okay? And we're actually in the process of surveying students in the next week or two to see, you know, how much is this really sinking in with students now that we're in year two. So our behavioral tenants are respectful, honorable, and responsible behavior. We actually took those tenants, that came out of some of the work that had already been established through the student and faculty group that had worked on the Honor Code, which had been several years before that. So the work just actually seemed to blend really nicely, and so it was an opportunity to revisit it, and those behavioral expectations seemed to fit most appropriately. So what we then did is we clearly defined what does respect, honor, and responsibility look like in all of these different settings. So we have a matrix that in next year, we'll be attaching the matrix to the school website. We're working with Martha Hogan right now to put some material up specifically about the Trojan Code. And so what we're able to do then is talk about what does respect, honor, and responsibility look like in the academic settings, whether you're in the Library and Media Center, the classroom? What does it look like when you're in the hallway? Because it really is different depending on the setting. So whenever we're in each particular setting, we basically try to address those behavioral tenants in the appropriate setting and in the appropriate way. So that seems to have been... One of the things that we really noticed is that we took for granted that students would just automatically know what was expected of them. And it was really, it was very enlightening to us that we realized we never really took the time to tell students exactly what we expected of them. We just assumed that they would always know. But if you think about it, the first time they ever really attend a pep rally is when they get to the high school. So how could they have possibly known what the behavioral expectations are? So we spend a lot of time just teaching and making it clear, and we have incredibly wonderful students that if you just tell them, they do it. We're very lucky in that sense. A really big component of our Trojan Code is the Thank You Program, and this was part of the program that was really exciting for us, because another thing that we realized is that we had, we know, we always knew we had such great students, but we really didn't take enough time to stop and thank you, thank them for doing all of the things that they were doing on a regular basis. So we implemented what we called the Thank You Program. We have our Trojan Code tickets that we use for weekly drawings, and we give them to students. And the other thing that sort of morphed out of that was that teachers started giving them to teachers to recognize each other for special things that they had been doing. So we do some weekly drawings, and prizes vary from some really small things to, a couple weeks ago, we raffled off, at least for the seniors, through the drawings was senior prom tickets, so you can imagine. Then the tickets all came flowing in. The funny thing, I'll show you a little bit more about the tickets on the next slide, but we also, we have the Trojan Code Transcript Designation, which again, came out of the Honor Code. One of the, if you made, met the requirements for the Honor Code, you would have a designation on your transcript. So we have simply transferred that to, consider that to be the Trojan Code instead of it being a repeat. And what we did do is we got rid of some of the paperwork that was involved in some of that, because that actually really deterred... because that actually really deterred kids. And honestly, they're busy, and the last thing we wanted to do was to bog them down with paperwork. So we're actually able to use our own data collection in order to determine, you know, which students have been able to meet our Trojan Code expectations. We have Thank You Thursdays, where we try to do positive recognition announcements and just other opportunities at class meetings, as well as trying to put things out in publications. We also have done in the past quarterly drawings for honor roll, perfect attendance, as well as no disciplinary referrals and positive postcards home. Those are things that we're continuing to work on and moving forward for next year. So just a little bit of data that we collected, we started counting the tickets. I have some wonderful student council kids that come up every week and help count the tickets. And so this is a breakdown of the tickets that we've collected. We've collected over 1,600 tickets by 404 students. I have, I am going to assure you, I bet there's twice as many tickets out there. So Kristin and maybe the boys in the back can also attest to it. I don't know what it is, but for some reason, the students like to hoard them sometimes. So we try to provide certain incentives to get students to turn them in. So there was like a flood of senior tickets that finally came in from the senior class. Like 200 tickets literally came in that week when we were...
So the shopping, so basically the shopping, they're waiting for the raffle.
They are, and that's the funny thing. I don't know if they're waiting for like the TV at the end of the year or something. You know, one time I said, we'll do extra drawings for the grade level that turns in the most ticket. And one of the 9th grade teachers, she collected over 100 tickets from one particular class of students. So for whatever, they hold on to them, but it's just, for us, we like the tickets. A lot of people didn't think it would work with high school students. But it's just a nice formalized way to stop. It's more about not necessarily changing student behavior. It was about changing adult behavior in terms of taking the time to stop and thank students for all the really great things that they've been doing. So we're, you know, that's one thing that we're going to continue to work on is increasing, trying to get a wider net of students that we reach through this, as well as the postcards home next year. Hopefully, we'll help with that as well. Discipline data, this is something that makes us really happy. This data actually goes through April 22nd. Last year, 2011-12, that was the first year that we did a full year of data collection. We use a data program called SWISS, which is through the PBIS framework. And you can see last year, we had a total of 2,700 office referrals. And that's not necessarily all the referrals that were turned in. Those are actually the ones where there was action taken, anything from a warning to an out-of-school suspension. Okay? And that would have been through April 22nd of last year. If you look at where we are this year, we're down to a little over, we're down to over 1,000. That's a 60% difference, which if you think about, that translates to the, that many fewer calls into classrooms, getting kids out of class, that many fewer minutes that a student is out of class. So we're really, really happy with that. We've done some structural things that I think have helped with some of the discipline referrals in terms of cutting back. But a large portion of that is just really owed to the positive response from teachers, really trying to work with students in the classroom, developing those positive relationships. And those are the proactive things that you need to do in order to keep behaviors down. So again, we're really, really excited about that. So and you can see too, if you go further up in the tier, students that were tending to get many, many discipline referrals, some of the things that we've been doing at tier two and tier three have also lessened those really frequent flyers in the office.
Eileen, I just wanted to jump in real quick and address the board for a sec. I know that over the past several years, in conversations with the board, we've, you know, talked a lot about continuous improvement on the academic setting and on the academic side, and the board's always been very interested about that whole child and how we support kind of that social and emotional health. And I guess as superintendent, one thing I'm really proud of is the K-12 continuum we have now supports in this area. And we've been questioned before, and well, how do you know? How do you measure? And I think we're trying to find different data points, not that we have it perfect, but that we can demonstrate have, you know, some positive trends. And I think this is a pretty powerful data point.
65% of all referrals account for class cutting. So again, if you look at the fact that we've increased or that we've decreased by 60%, that also tells you that students are in the classroom more often, which is really great. So just again, on a positive note, just a variety of different things. At this point, we have 82% of our students with zero referrals so far this year. 88% of the students are on track to earn the Trojan Code Character Transcript Distinction. That distinction is you have to have one, it's one minor referral or fewer. So, and then again, 81% of our faculty and staff report a somewhat positive or very positive atmosphere. That was through a survey that we gave in March of this year. So we're really encouraged by that in terms of our faculty and staff. 88% of the teachers have participated in the program by giving out Trojan Code tickets this year. Everybody learned the fight song back in the fall. And again, just the development of the Trojan Wall Spirit Group came out of our Trojan Code efforts. A stronger connection to SHS Connect. We've actually been using SHS Connect time as a way to really, you know, teach what we want to do with the Trojan Code, take that time to have those discussions with students. And that's been really helpful. Faculty and staff appreciation events, which has come out of students initiative. They've been wanting to kind of give back to the adults in the building. And we have had an increased number of spirit events as a result. So we're really, we're really happy. I know we certainly still have a long way to go and a lot of things left to do, but I feel like we're really on the right track.
So certainly, we'll open it up for questions for Brian and Eileen in just a moment. But you know, as Matt shared, when we step back and we think about the past two presentations regarding school climate, you really can see that articulation of those character tenants and ideals take well. And although they might be slightly, called slightly different things at different schools, again, when you take the broad picture of things, there's really some incredible work that's happening within this district to really articulate what our high behavioral expectations are, coupled with our academic expectations, and what a difference that's making within for our students, as well as our faculty and staff members. So I do open it up to any questions for Brian or Eileen that you might have regarding Henry James or the high school.
I would just, a comment, not a question, but as far as the positive reinforcement, I've heard it from my kids and their friends, that it's been nice to have that good behavior recognized and not always focus on the negative. And it's something that they really do appreciate. So, you know, I give you guys a lot of credit for finding ways to make that work, because I know that's not an easy group.
Well, it's not an easy thing at the high school. So when we were putting the program together, even to find models, they're not out there. So it was really starting from scratch and being creative so that it would work with a high school population.
Eileen, you talked a couple of times about the role of the adults and the overall success of this. And I'm sure it's at the, you know, I know it's at the elementary and the middle level as well. But you hit on it a couple of times. Maybe just reiterate that, because I think that, you know, it's important to recognize that these tenants are for everybody, right? And to really create that impact, you need the buy-in. So how was that initially? You said you had great support?
We had great support. We were, it was at a time where I think adults were a little concerned about just sort of the overall morale, not only of just adults, but even students in the building. That, you know, the lack of spirit and perhaps the rise of, I wouldn't necessarily say really bad behaviors, but just behaviors that may, that were bordering on really disrespectful. And so there was some concern on that, not necessarily by a huge number of students, but it definitely, it wasn't sort of the positive feel that I think everybody wanted. And so at the time that we all went for training and started professional development, it was really the perfect timing for us, because everybody was really invested and truly wanted to make this work. And one of the things through the training is they say, if you have 80% buy-in, you're good. I would certainly say, and based on some survey data that we had done even prior to this year, we were at 90 or above on the part of the faculty. Another great emphasis is the importance of relationships. The bottom line is, if you want to keep discipline down in any area, it's all about taking a proactive stance. And that starts with making a positive connection with students in your classroom, on duty, whether you're standing in the hallway through various activities. And the other thing too, is we're, teachers are not so quick to send students to the office anymore. Not that there were a lot of people that were doing that, but they also, they figured out too that they need to work on that relationship with the student. Because ultimately, that student's not going to live in my office, they're going back to the classroom. So that's, that's the notion of, you know, the relationship piece is so important, and you have to work that out. And another really big emphasis of this is there has to be, PBIS pushes a four-to-one ratio of positive to negative, four positives to every negative. And so we actually had a lot of teachers that were trying to track that in themselves. How many times have I, you know, how often am I using positive comments versus negative comments in my classroom? Am I greeting everybody? Am I touching base with every individual in every classroom every day? And especially through our professional development, we divided people up in interdisciplinary groups because they don't usually have an opportunity to work that way. And we actually, we just have really incredible positive people. And it was nice, we had so many of those people to kind of share and spread ideas. So it was very supportive and very helpful.
So Eileen, thanks for mentioning the relationships, because they are so important. And when we talk about school climate, we really are looking at all of the interactions among the people in the building, whether they, you know, adults to adults, adults to students, and students to students. Because those relationships really matter, and how people treat each other really matters when it comes to school climate. So thank you for highlighting that, but clearly, it's at the crux of what we do and all of our efforts, K-12, pre-K-12 in this regard.
I have a couple of questions. On one of the slides here on the high school statement of behavior, I was just impressed when you were talking about positive school culture, how you had created, developed the PD to get to that point.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
No, that's very impressive, that you had to create that professional development piece to get to that positive school culture.
And a lot of it was getting feedback on the behavior statement. A lot of it was getting feedback on the behavioral expectations. And it really fostered a lot of important discussions amongst the high school staff of what does it mean? What does it look like for high school students? And how do we have to model that for our own students? And if we expect them to behave that way, we have to behave that way ourselves.
And the positive postcards home, what are they?
Well, we have, the plan for next year is, literally what we want to do is we want to have blank postcards in the faculty room with address labels, a whole binder full of address labels for every student. And so the opportunity, you go in the faculty room, pick one up, find an address label for one of your students, and just send a positive note home. We're just trying to make it as easy as possible, you know, versus email or something else.
Very good, very good. I also have, the discipline referral, this is an important slide here, because over the years, I know this board has worked very hard, you know, to reduce the number of referrals, you know, vis-à-vis the office. So this really is, from 2011-12 to 2012-13, these numbers really have decreased a lot. But going to the next page, I'm trying to be positive about this one, the numbers here. 20%, you had 81% of our faculty that reported somewhat positive. Tell me about the 20%. Was it negative or somewhat negative?
I'd have to go, I think there were some that were in the middle, like no change. And then some, there were some that were in the negative. But I do know that it was fewer than, it was definitely fewer than 10% felt that it was, you know, may have been negative. So, and I'm going to be really honest with you. I feel like I'm not sure sometimes what you can do to change things, that there are sometimes a few people that you're just not going to get on board, but you have to really keep going. So that's, and the other thing too is, you know, the fact that 88% of the teachers have given out tickets, they've actually, they've done something with the program, which is another indication that they're doing something with it.
No, Lydia, I think we'll also have, we had just mentioned at the last board meeting that parents and faculty and students of certain grades completed school climate surveys. And so those reports are being compiled right now. But that is going to be another wonderful element of data that we will have and to use regarding our school climate planning.
Don't give us good feedback on that one, so, very good.
Are teachers encouraged, isn't the right word, to not refer disciplinary matters to the office and try to deal with it? Or do they just, that just kind of happened?
The goal is to, you want to handle discipline at the lowest level possible, because ultimately, the goal is you want the behavior to change or you want it to stop. And so most often, with certain kinds of behaviors, if you have a conversation with a student, if you change a seat, if you call home to a parent, you know, those are all things that can happen at a lower level than sending a student out of class. And if you really think about what's at stake with that, it's time out of the classroom, you're not learning. What does that do? It also undermines your relationship with the teacher, because it sort of shows the teacher doesn't necessarily have the authority to kind of handle some of the behaviors in class, when it's minor level things. What we've done is we have a chart that we used with our staff that determines minor behaviors versus major behaviors. And clearly, there are major behaviors that have to be dealt with administratively immediately. And then minor behaviors, but clearly, if there are minor behaviors over time, you know, we do, we're certainly supportive and expect administration to step in.
Yeah, it's interesting, because we attended this conference today, and a lot of what you're saying, when you're talking about time spent, you know, for example, just in referrals, I know years ago, we had many more referrals. But it's interesting how you can compare it with instructional time, you know, that is so necessary and so needed. So when teachers and staff and administrators are spending less time, we're just using the referral piece of it, more time is able to be spent with instructional time, with students for more benefit, positive way. So that does, that does tie in. Any other questions?
I'm just wondering if you guys hoard your tickets? Do you save them up?
I don't, I know people who do. I think lots of times, it's just they don't want to take the effort to make the trip down to the office unless they hear it's going to be a really good prize.
You're right on. You know your school climate.
You guys wouldn't be hoarding your tickets, would you? Yeah, that's true. And you only have how many more days of school left? I mean, when is this?
Nineteen.
Nineteen, so, right?
They're waiting for cash.
Well, I will say, we're waiting to do things like for the juniors, like pick your parking spot or pick your open period, you know, those are things that are easy for us, because they're no cost. Yet they're, they're high-ticket items, so to speak. What's that?
High value.
Yes, exactly. They're very high-value sorts of things.
Just if you don't mind, I will point out that when we started training three years ago, I remember distinctly on the first morning, the principal was required to be a part of the team. But I turned to Eileen at that point, and I said, I don't want people at the table turning this issue, I want you to lead on this. And as a result, when she has talked about, there aren't a lot of models for high schools doing this work, she has now been called upon by the experts at the state level and at CREG, who are doing training in PBIS. And there are many times that Eileen is being asked to go out and present our work to other schools and is being recognized as a leader of this school culture work for high schools in the state. And that's important to note. And I would also, her partner on that, one of our special education teachers, Eileen O'Neal, has been key. So our Trojan Code Committee, we often refer to Eileen squared. Are they, where are they headed?
Every time we're going out of the building, if we go out of the building together, people are like, oh, you're going to do a Trojan Code thing.
So it's really, just want to recognize that for the board, to know how this is being received beyond Simsbury.
Thank you, Neil. Thank you very much for your efforts. Great presentation. Thank you.
Actually, Tom, we really hope to cash the prizes, but I think lots of the principal, that's where you generate.
I get no tickets.
I thought they were supposed to be positive.
Think an iPad, yours is one.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Great, very good. All right. And we are now on to Exhibit 5 in the information report, our security audit reports.
Okay, great. At this time, I'd like to introduce John McDonald. John, of course, is with Emergency Response Crisis Management. He's the president of that consulting firm. And John came out with his team to the district to conduct a security audit, a full audit, after the Sandy Hook incident. And John's had an opportunity to spend a lot of time, as his team has in our district, debrief us on kind of his audit findings in terms of commendations and recommendations. And we've asked John to come back tonight and share his information with you and provide you a forum to ask any questions that you have. And I think it's extremely timely that we had the two presentations from both Brian and Eileen that we had, because one of the things John's group really focuses on, and one of the reasons we contracted with John's group, was the overall importance they place on school climate as a deterrent to significant events that can occur within schools. So I know that John's going to weave some of that into his presentation, but I think as we've represented tonight, we really have a strong K-12 continuum that we're going to continue to build on in that area. But John, welcome back, and it's good to see you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I have to echo, I'm sorry they left, but PBIS in high schools is unheard of. The fact that it's so successful here... The fact that it's so successful here, it really is a model program. I've seen PBIS work great at the elementary. I don't know anybody that's tried it at the high school. And the fact that you have an expert in your district in PBIS, she may be coming out to Colorado very soon.
I like that.
Because I would love to see that model in other districts. I think that, you know, at the high school age level, it's such an important and impressionable age that really will define the future for students as they go into college and the workplace. And we have great opportunity if we use that model, so I'm really excited. You know, we, we looked at four key areas. Mitigation, preparedness, response, and recovery. We know that these are the areas that surround emergency management, crisis planning. And within that, we took a very close and detailed look at the climate and culture of Simsbury. We talked to key stakeholders all over your community, from the kids themselves at the middle and high school level, to parents, counselors and psychologists, teachers, principals. It's really important for us to have a good understanding of what your climate and culture is before we make recommendations on safety and security programs. Because if they don't fit, you'll never use them and then there's no purpose in doing the audit. So, when we looked at mitigation, one of the first things that we took a look at is, what is your infrastructure? What currently exists? How strong is it? And I can tell you that I work with school districts all over the country, and I'm so pleased at what you already have in place as a core component of your infrastructure. You're much further ahead than most districts. And I think that that says a lot about the planning and the thought process behind school safety. Your secure front entry system, cameras, interior classroom locks that you'd already been planning for, radios that have interoperability with first responders. And these are some key findings that came out of the Columbine Commission more than fourteen years ago. You've implemented them. Around the country, I see school districts struggling to get to this point, and you've already done it, so I give you great accolades for doing that. I think there are opportunities, and we've defined some of them. I think the opportunity to continue to limit access but providing teachers with access through a key fob process that really allows your district to know who's coming in and out of the building without having to issue keys, it's a great cost savings measure, while at the same time gives the teachers freedom to come and go within defined times that you choose. Really, we, we think that the reconfigured office space is definitely needed at both Squadron Line and Henry James. Increased sight lines are critical from the front entryway into office areas. A couple of things that we know from trending school violent incidents. Seventy-five percent of all school shooters come in your front door. And we looked between Columbine and Sandy Hook, and there were more than a hundred and thirty-five school shootings. Seventy-five percent are coming in the front door. What are the opportunities for us to stop that and create time barriers? And we're going to talk about time barriers in just a minute. So I highly recommend that that is something that you, you consider and focus on. A time barrier is an opportunity to prevent somebody from entering your building or slowing them down so law enforcement can get to your location, take care of that person while you're all safe and secure in your environment. Time barriers are a critical opportunity. That's our time to slow down the bad guy, to get everyone safe within our, our building. We do it in a few ways. We lock the front doors. And I have heard, well, Sandy Hook locked the front doors. That is true. But there are other opportunities for us. One is a new glass film that can be placed on the glass, and I've tested this myself with my team. And it's a glass film that doesn't change the dynamics of your school, nobody will notice it. It's very new on the market. We're seeing Defense Department, Pentagon, the White House using it. We're looking, we're seeing a lot of school districts that are now looking at this. I'm looking at this for my own school district. I think it has great merit. Here's what it does. The Sandy Hook shooter was able to get through glass in seven to eight rounds. We've put thirty-nine to forty-three rounds through glass using this glass film and have still not been able to penetrate. We then had to use a sledgehammer to get through. That's a time barrier. That provides us that moment, opportunity to get everybody safe, keep that bad guy outside trying to get in while law enforcement response is on the way. And your law enforcement response in Simsbury, from what we can tell from working with your law enforcement, your chief, your, and his people, as well as looking at some of the statistics, is very quick here. Some districts are very spread out, don't have the opportunity to have nearly the response time that you do. So I think that there's tremendous opportunity using current structures in place, adding time barriers like a window film, ensuring that your school continues to be locked. You already have a secure front entry. And, you know, we always balance fortress building with a welcoming environment. We don't want our kids to feel like they're in prison, and they should never feel that way. The same time, we recognize that there are problems with school violence around the country, and these issues continue. So that balance is important. This doesn't change the climate of your school, it doesn't impact the look, people will not even notice it if you choose to do this. So I think there's an opportunity there. Preparedness is really, I think, what you have the opportunity to make the most improvement on in Simsbury. You already have emergency protocol system in place, use a code red system. You do emergency drills. I think that the opportunity to do enhanced emergency drills, go into classrooms, have conversations with kids about why they're actually doing the drill is important. You know, for years, we've been teaching our kids what to do when they're on fire. What do we tell them to do? Stop, drop, and roll, right? The new conversation that we have to have is what do you do when you're under fire? Because in the last fifty years, we've not lost one student to a school fire in this country. We've lost hundreds to gunfire. So, we provide strategies for students at age appropriate levels, from kindergarten through high school. What do you do when you're in a restroom all alone and you hear lockdown or code red? What do you do if you're in a hallway? Where do you go? How do you get safe? What about your cellphone? Should you use it in the midst of that lockdown event? We know bad guys are hypersensitive to sight and sound. So we're giving kids strategies for survival. And the opportunity to go into the classroom and talk to them is also our opportunity to talk to the teacher and give the teacher survival strategies, because that's every bit as important. What I know about educators is that time after time, they all do one thing. In crisis, they all run to the gunfire. That's inherent. I've seen it so many times in my career. Teachers and principals want to protect kids, that's their, that's their life. And in times of crisis, they step up. So it's important for us, if they're going to do that, to make sure that they have the strategies that give them the opportunity for better survival odds. And we can do that in an appropriate manner without scaring anyone. I'm a big believer in being emergency prepared, not emergency scared. There's no reason to make this such a program that causes people to overthink it, to be worried about it, and to go home and not sleep because of it. So, we really believe that the need for incident command teams is an important component of preparedness. FEMA and the Department of Education recommend that all schools have an incident command team trained in the FEMA structure. And it's the good FEMA, not the bad FEMA. We want to make sure that everybody understands that. We recommend that you replace codes with common language. That's a recommendation by the U.S. Department of Education also, as well as FEMA and law enforcement agencies around the country. Direct language, if, call it what it is, because in the midst of a crisis, people will forget what that code red is or what they're supposed to do in it. So we provided some recommendations. Believe that the opportunity to use a program from the I Love You Guys Foundation called the Standard Response Protocol is a great opportunity. And it's something that thousands of school districts around the country are now using. And I'm a big believer in it. And I can talk offline more about that. But I've seen it battle tested, and that's an important component. Does it work in the midst of a crisis? Give you a quick example. Three years ago, I led a response to a school shooting. Three weeks before that school shooting, we trained the staff on the Standard Response Protocol. We had conversations about what it would feel like, what it would be like, what you'll hear, what you'll see. And our staff rose to the occasion. And we had a ninety-second law enforcement response to that school shooting. In ninety seconds, our teachers and staff tackled, disarmed, subdued, and hogtied the suspect and had them ready for transport. Now that's success, and very proud of what they did. But it wasn't just teachers taking action against the gunman. We had teachers doing the right thing with the kids that were wounded. One of the students that was shot ran to the last teacher she could find in the classroom, held her arm up and said, "I think I've been shot." They brought her in and they put a pressure bandage on her, and they found Otter Pops, frozen Otter Pops in their freezer in the classroom, and they made a homemade sling out of Otter Pops and kept her arm elevated. We talk about the what ifs, and we talk about the whys, and we also talk about the what are you willing to do? How far are you willing to go to protect your kids, protect yourself, and do it in a way that ensures that you go home safe? In the safety and security world and education, that's a rut today. But again, those conversations are different at the school level than what I'm having with you tonight. Emergency prepared, not emergency scared. So preparedness is a real key component here. And of course, the response phase is something that we really took a look at. You have some really strong central-based management personnel leaders here, and I think that really sets the tone for everything. You have administrators that are willing to engage and act in your district. And you have teachers and students and staff, and we heard this time and time again, that want to be better prepared. They want to know what to do. We had one student tell us, we did three lockdown drills in like a month. I think it's, and he said it in his words, "I think it should be quality over quantity." And he's right. And there are ways that, you know, we can help with that. Climate and culture, we talked about it tonight, and I love climate and culture. You know, it's, it's that climate and culture that supports school safety. You have it because you have kids that are engaged and willing to step up. We asked your own kids, what do you do when you see bullying? And your kids told us, well, we try to handle it ourselves first. We like to talk to the person that's doing the bullying and say, "Stop it." I love that. It's kids willing to engage and act in an appropriate manner, and if they can't, then they know they can go to a teacher, a counselor, or an administrator, and they're not afraid to. But what we heard consistently from your kids is, bullying's not a big issue here because we just don't tolerate it. That says a lot about your community and your kids. We believe that tabletop exercises, active shooter training with law enforcement is really an important component, working together. And it's that mindset of preparedness. And if we look at studies, what we know is the kids that say they feel safe in schools are better learners, have higher graduation rates. You already have some of the highest graduation rates and strongest academic gains that I've seen. But we can always have a baseline of school safety that allows that to be built upon. And then recovery. You have a very strong crisis mental health response team already in place. We had a chance to talk to that team, talk to those teams. You have a supportive school community. I think those are really important needs. And this is everyday needs. These are needs for suicidal students, for students that might have abuse going on at home, that might be depressed, upset over anything. And your crisis team understands how to work with those kids, and I think that's a really important factor in why your kids feel so engaged, because they know they can go to a caring and trusted adult. I also see opportunities here, though, for collaboration with local, state, mental health teams. I think that it's incumbent upon you to learn the lessons, and I really urge you to work with organizations like the Red Cross, talk to Sandy Hook, find out what they've been through, learn those lessons. The only way we get better is by sitting down and learning and finding out where we didn't do such a good job and where we did a great job. Because it allows us to then build a stronger framework for school safety. State of Connecticut is doing some really good things. I see a lot of similarity with what you're doing now with what we did in the aftermath of Columbine. And then, I guess I want to talk about your, your climate and culture as it relates to that violent incident stat that I've got up here, which is eighty-one percent of violent incidents in our schools, someone other than the attacker knew it was going to happen and didn't report it. You have bullying boxes in your schools. I'm not sure if you're aware of that or not. Your kids can actually go to a box and drop a note in and say, "I'm worried about something." And they call it the bullying box, but it's really a tip box for any issue that impacts your kids. Now, if a student feels threatened, if they feel nervous, if they hear something, are they going to say something? If you promote that and ensure their anonymity, they will talk to you, and they will give you good information. That's your intelligence, that's your intel from students, and that's a really important and key component of school safety. So I really think that as you move forward with your schools, find a way to make those tip boxes more relevant. Make sure that kids know that they're going to be supported and that they're not going to be considered a snitch, because telling is definitely not snitching. There is a big distinction there. But it's up to us to have that conversation. Part of that conversation is, it's part of your duty as a good citizen, to step up when you know something's happening, when you know something is occurring. And eighty-one percent of these occurrences, where there's violence in our schools, somebody knows, we need that other person to step up and say, "Here's what I've heard." And that can make all the difference in the world. Overall, I have to tell you, I'm very, very impressed with what I've seen in your school district. And it's not often I get a chance to say that. So often, I hate writing recommendations down because I know the capital expenditure amount is going to be astronomical because the work hasn't been done. You've done the work, you've created the baseline. I think the opportunity to just be more well-rounded, have more structure in place, mindset of preparedness is really going to provide you the opportunities to be more successful if a crisis were to happen. Maybe I should say, when the crisis happens. Because I know the crisis will happen. I live in a community that's had four school shootings in fourteen years. We're a small community. We'd never think anything could happen. And I get that sense from some in this community that it could never happen here, but it happened just thirty or forty miles away. It can always happen here on any given day. So the opportunity for you to take these ideas, thoughts, suggestions, and run with it will make you, I think, stronger in the long run. And if you do this in a consistent manner, it also makes a significant difference, and someday you have to stand in front of the public, in front of your community, when they ask, "What did you do?" I have a personal thought that I'll never stand up in front of my community and say, "I didn't do everything I possibly could," within a reason to keep our kids safe. And that's the key. So much of what we offer you is called low hanging fruit, not a lot of capital expenditure. You don't need it, you've done it. So I applaud you for that. And thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have one.
Yeah.
John, we talked a little bit about this when we debriefed as a team. A lot of the work on the incident command and the standard response protocol and changes and shifts we need to make there over time, you know, involve professional development.
Sure.
I know certainly you said you're willing to come back. I know certainly you said you're willing to come back out in the fall and start to initiate that training. From a structural standpoint, comparative districts, from what you've seen, what is the structure that people have to monitor that or to ensure that they're moving that work forward? Is it a central office role, a team-based approach that we have, or is it an individual assigned to that?
You need, well, I shouldn't say you need. I'd recommend that you have a team approach to it that really looks at it from a global perspective and really make sure that you're hitting the check boxes. And it's certainly something we're willing to help you with. And I think that the thought process behind it is, if you can get people trained in the few incidents command system, what you're doing is you're now speaking the same language that fire, law enforcement, and other first responders speak. And once you speak that same language and you're not looking at each other like you're aliens, it really does provide a baseline. And from an organizational standpoint, if you take that tree or that list and you just do your check marks as you go down and say, "Did we hit this? Have we hit this by a specific date?" I think we can help you develop what those 10 steps are that are going to get you to your Incident Command team system in place. And then it's frankly, sitting down with them and doing a tabletop so they understand their roles. It's not enough to say, "You're the incident commander, you're the public information officer, you're in charge of operations." What does operations do? What's a public information officer supposed to do? And what's the incident commander role? And we can help with that, because I think it's really important that, and we need to have law enforcement and fire sitting in those conversations so that they're in agreement, because you don't want to run this way and they're running this way. So I'd say that's a global perspective. You need to bring in a team approach, and I'd put them as strong partners with you in developing that program.
Great. Thank you.
Questions from the board.
I have a question, John. First of all, thank you very much. Your comments are very thoughtful and appreciate your work. Your closing comment that you made, though, really struck home for me, thinking, if and when this happens in our community, have we done everything we possibly could? So one comment, I just say, so there's a list of opportunities, right? So from your perspective, is that the balance that you talked about? Or is that kind of, from your perspective, the bare minimum? I'd just like to get a sense of context on that. And then the other part, the second question, would be kind of a, one of our natural responses, and I think one of many, many communities in Connecticut, after what happened in Sandy Hook, was just a natural increased police presence at the schools. And you kind of, you didn't spend a whole lot of time talking about that. Is that something that you think is temporary and should kind of stop? Or you think that that's a reasonable ongoing kind of?
So I guess I'll answer that question first. I love police presence in schools. I'm a huge fan of it. And I'll tell you why. Cops in school, especially cops that want to be in schools, really are the beat cops of yesterday. It's the opportunity for them to get to know the kids, the kids to get to know them. It changes behavior and perspective, and it's the opportunity for some kids to have their first positive role model interaction with law enforcement, instead of a negative reaction that maybe they're having at home or in the neighborhood. That's exciting, because we can start to begin having conversations, and that law enforcement person can come in and really make a difference in the lives of young people, correct behavior, be a role model. That's really important. I've, schools all over the country, I've talked to that have done adopt cop programs. PTA organizations putting refrigerators and stocking it with pop and candy bars to bring cops into their schools. I love it. Great. Partnerships are great. You know, I'm a big believer in a collaborative relationship. Some schools have set up report-writing stations for law enforcement to come in and type their reports, because we'd rather have them in our schools writing their reports than go back to the police department and write their reports. You know why? Well, that cop car looks pretty good out front. Nobody's going to bother us now. And I like those type of opportunities, because they don't cost anything. The goodwill that you generate is tremendous. Law enforcement is part of our community. They're typically moms and dads. They're engaged, they're coaches, they're involved. So I like having that presence, and I think that you should definitely consider continuing that. And you're right, it's always easy initially, and this, you didn't just see it in Connecticut, we saw it nationwide. I'll tell you, I've not seen any event, any tragedy, that has had this much, I guess, just focus on it than, I guess, what we saw 14 years ago at Columbine is the last thing I can equate it to. But now, because of the age of the kids, it changed the conversation once again. And because of the ongoing and continual issue we have of school violence in the country, we have to look at things differently. What we grew up with is not what our kids are growing up with. They're having conversations about this. They're writing songs about this. And if we can change that culture and that climate in the school, you already have a wonderful climate and culture, but if we can help reinforce that with law enforcement in there, I say, do it. I'm a big believer in the SRO program. I think they do wonderful things. It takes a special kind of cop to want to be an SRO. Most cops don't. And it's an important component for schools today. It's a good management tool for principals as well to have a strong partner there with them. And as far as your first question, I would say that this is the balance. I think the balance is preparing, mitigating that you're already doing, creating a response team that's ready to go. All of you need to understand what your role on a school board is, and it's significant in times of tragedy and crisis. The community is looking at you. What are you doing? And if you can have those conversations upfront about your role, what your expectations with each other, what district leadership are, those are important things to talk about today, because in the midst of a crisis, you're going to find yourself saying, "What do we do now?" And you can do the what-ifs ahead of time and, I think, be much stronger for it.
So to push that concept of the police presence one step further, do you guys have a view about whether there should be a permanent, I'll say gun, because it can come in a lot of forms, but permanent armed person in the school?
You know, I really believe that it's a community decision. Every community is different. I would say that some rural communities that are so far removed that maybe 40 to 50 minutes from a law enforcement response are completely different than a community that's three to five minutes away or less. What I struggle with, and having been a police officer and talking to my tactical friends today, is that since Columbine, everything changed. Today, the idea is that if there's an active shooter in a school, they go in right away. There's no perimeter. We don't wait. We go in. And today, law enforcement's taught, "You see a gun, you shoot." End of story. See a gun, you shoot. Take care of that threat immediately. So the concern is, who's going to have the gun? How is law enforcement going to be able to de-conflict who has that weapon in a school? And if they have to start thinking about and worrying about a gun in the school other than the bad guy, they're going to change their protocols. They may not come in as fast. They may sit back and assess the situation. I'd like those people to come in as fast as they can get in, because I know the response really is a determining factor in what that bad guy does. Now, we know that about 70% of all school shootings are done in less than five minutes, and almost 100% are done in less than 15 minutes. So when we talk about time barriers, I like to think of it almost in a football terminology. If we're going into a defensive mode from a school standpoint, law enforcement's coming in on the offensive side, together, we're really providing that full team effort. The other issue I have is if a teacher is the one that you determine should have that gun in a school, and they decide to go after that bad guy, if there's multiple shooters and they've just left their classroom empty with no one to take care of the kids in there, I think we have issues there, too. I worry greatly about that. We know in modern time, and I look back at the last 16 years, there's been no successful breach of a properly locked-down classroom by a school shooter. Now, it's a properly locked classroom. Why? Because they're looking for the high casualty count, and they're looking for easy-to-find victims. They don't have time to spend trying to breach that door. So what you're doing by changing locks in your classroom doors, I think is significant. You provide the teacher the opportunity to have their own secure perimeter, not just your school, but it's now a layered approach, a layered perimeter. And I love a layered security approach. From a gun standpoint, those are my issues. I worry about what law enforcement's going to see, what they're going to do. They may slow down their response time. That doesn't do us any good. And I can tell you, the amount of training that it takes on a going basis to have a tactical mindset is significant, and that's not most of our teachers or educators. Now, some can, certainly. And you may have somebody in your community, in your organization here, that's a rock star at that, that you may want to take a look at. But primarily, most kindergarten teachers want to teach kids and not have to worry about the weapon. Most principals want to manage their school and have high academic achievement. And if they're worried about the gun, I can tell you, as someone that carries a gun on a daily basis, that gun is never, ever removed from my mind. I'm always aware that it's on my hip. And I've been carrying a gun for 25 years. For professionals, for educators coming into this today, they will never forget that it's on their hip. They'll be more cognizant of that, I believe, than they may be about what they're doing in the classroom. So those are my concerns. But I'll say this, if I'm a school district that has great concerns and I'm a long way from law enforcement, what I do may be different than what we see in town. It's a community decision, certainly.
John, you know, we've got approval for a second SRO in the budget in terms of strategic placement of our resources as we have them now. We have an SRO at Simsbury High School. We will have an SRO at the middle school with some shared responsibilities among the elementary schools. Is that, in your professional lens, the correct place to house those resources?
I think it is. I mean, the middle school and the high school are certainly the areas where you really have the most issues, any school district does. And from a pure safety standpoint, we always want to make sure we're protecting our most innocent and smallest kids that can help themselves. But truly, we have, when you look at the statistics, a much greater need at middle and high school than we do at the elementary. But what you're doing is you're also providing some responsibility for that SRO into the elementary, and that's the opportunity to really attract the attention of those kids so they start and begin to understand the expectations when they go into middle school, when they go into high school. And there's a consistency there that really makes a difference. So I'm excited that you get, you're going to have a second SRO. I think that'll be great for your district.
Me, too. Very excited. This is it.
You have a great police department that really wants to support you, that says a lot of good things about you, and they're not here, so I can say that. But they really believe strongly in the partnership, and they talked a lot about how they can pick up the phone and call Matt, and they know that they're going to have a good relationship, and they have a good relationship every day, and that's important to them.
I mean, I'll just take the opportunity to say, since the Sandy Hook event, the presence of the police department has stayed consistent throughout the year, and we're seeing some of those relationships being fostered between police officers that have those schools in their general area, the principal and the kids. So my hope is, as resources are available, the chief has always said, we'll continue to be able to do that to the best of their ability, which has been, I think, great for the district.
The more they know your school, the better off the response is going to be, and the faster they'll get in there.
John, you had talked to staff and students. Did you actually talk to parents in your study?
We did. We brought parents in.
Yeah, curious what they're.
You know, the parent perspective is that they felt like the schools were very safe. Their kids felt safe in the schools. Parents worry about drugs in your community. They talked a lot about drug issues that they hear about. And mainly, it was, "This is what we've heard," not so much what we've seen. So I don't know how significant the problem really is, but from a parent perspective, they're not worried about drugs so much in the school, but on the peripheral, on the outside, in the neighborhoods, right around the high schools are a concern for them. Parents did not have a significant worry about bullying. I will tell you that that is truly, truly unusual, because we typically hear a lot about bullying in schools. So they were not as concerned about it as most we hear from. So that was interesting for us to get a sense of your culture as well. They want to know that their kids are safe. What is the school district going to do from a security perspective to continue, to promote safety? They like the secured entry program. Universally, I think they all felt very good about that system in place. They worry about after-school events, and they worry about what happens if something happens either during a sporting event or a theater event. The schools are community houses, and they had a lot of questions about that. Your primary opportunity at that point is to really either hire an off-duty police officer, a security officer, to kind of monitor people coming in, or have just staff and parents understand that if they see something, they need to say something, so you can make that phone call. Limited options when you don't, on a 24/7 basis, when schools are continually being used in after-hours for community events. But those are their primary issues.
The biggest opportunity for prevention, is that what you kind of said, the bully box and having people feel comfortable coming forward with information?
Absolutely.
Because a lot of this is kind of like, not after the fact, but it's not preventative.
Right. You know, I've been told, people say you can't measure prevention, and I think they're wrong. I found ways to measure that, and that's to ask kids how safe they feel in their school. Start that baseline. Find out where your kids are from elementary through high school. And then, as you do these programs, monitor and find out how much safer they feel in the aftermath of walking into their classrooms during lockdown or code-red drill and talking to them, and actually explaining what this process is all about, and take the confusion out of it, take the questions out of it. So now they have an understanding of what it is that they're doing, what they're preparing for. Kindergarten and first grade, it's about strangers, stranger danger. It's about maybe somebody we don't know, and we just need to be careful and we want to hide. You know, the upper levels, it's about a bad guy in your school with a gun. And here's how we're going to protect you, and here's how you're going to protect yourself. And making sure that they know that if they come to you with information, or if they choose to share it, that they're going to be protected also. Our kids are very hyper-aware of the snitching mentality in every community, at every school. And they may hear something within their group of friends that's not right. They need to know they can go to someone and that that information's going to be taken care of. So I think that if you put a system in place that allows law enforcement and principals to work together, to take a look at those tips, to work those tips together, to resolve them, that's a great opportunity. Not everything's going to be a law enforcement issue. Not everything will be a school issue.
John, that's one of the things we've seen, I think, now in the second year of the SRO at the high school, is the relationship and the accessibility that kids have to Officer Chase and their willingness to share certain things that when we didn't have that resource, that just didn't happen. And it's something that I think we're cognizant of, and we've always said, you want each kid to have an adult that they can go to, to feel comfortable when they feel in crisis or feel the need to, even if it's not a tip about an emergency.
Sure.
But anything, to go and be able to share that, because they know they're going to be supported.
We really pushed this last year in our community, the need for kids to be aware of their friends in crisis. And what we saw was an increase in reports from our kids, from three reports of, "My friends are suicidal," to over 91 last year, reports of, "My friends are suicidal." friends are suicidal," to over 91 last year, reports of, "My friends are suicidal." Out of those 91 reports, we ended up having 80 kids put on mental health holds for significant issues, suicidal behavior. But our suicides went down from five to one. So we see the success, and what the kids realize is, "I can go to somebody and talk about my friend and say, 'I'm really worried about them. Can you help?'" And that opportunity to help and make a difference is so important. So, you know, the nice thing about your SROs is they base their lives on tips. They're all about intel. And, you know, they're going to turn those kids into little intel machines and help change that culture and really delve into the issues that impact your school, and that's pretty exciting because that is a positive.
Any further questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Very detailed, precise report. There's a lot to think about here. All right, we are now moving on to proposed building use fee schedule. Burke.
A little more mundane.
I was going to say. Notice it didn't transition.
Which is okay, right? Yeah. We do this every year, but I'd like to point out that, you know, this is the one, I guess, part of our policy that sort of by definition gets reviewed and changed each, each year. So there's more policy behind this fee schedule. And some of that policy relates to the terms of incremental maintenance, which is the first heading, and a couple pages back is the standard maintenance. The fee structure is such that a for, a totally for-profit user would pay the higher standard, standard maintenance costs. And the fees are generally up 1.5%. There's a little bit of rounding. It's, it's different to make sure that we have the three-hour and the one-hour ratio so that kind of rounds out. And I wanted to bring your attention to a couple of shaded areas. On page two, we've realized the need for locker rooms to be rented in some cases when schools are using our, our facility with, for outside sports teams on the turf field. So that was one thing that we wanted to add. And then for consistency purposes, if you go back to pages five and, let's just page five, I guess, the personnel fees, which are on top of those standard fees of, of use of the, of the space, this helps, this pays for the staff that, that need to, you know, to be present to either clean or, or open up. And the shaded areas, we really just added under the audio tech and nutrition services, just making sure that for, for the different costs, if there's weekends or holiday hours needed, that we cover those costs. So that's really the major difference, just to trying to be more consistent in covering those costs. If there's any other questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
What kind of revenue does this bring in a year? I know I should blow that one out.
We estimate, we estimate 80,000 in our, in our book the last couple of years. It does vary considerably from year, from year to year, and those revenues go to the town. And then we offset some of the costs of the staff time for those types of groups where we don't always charge, and that's in that budget category. It's about 34,000. Community services, I think it's our, it's our group. 11, 1100. And that's, that's a $34,000 budget. So that helps to defray costs when we don't have fees coming back for, for certain groups, nonprofit and other groups.
Are, are groups pretty steady for the year that are renting the schools? Or have we dropped off? Or are we gaining any?
There's very, there is very consistent use of our buildings. I guess the one area that we know that's going to change is some of the church groups that rent our buildings on weekends for classes and so forth. There is one, there is one group that has informed us that they won't be renting space. So that's, that'll be a little bit of a decline.
Yeah, St. Mary's is going back to their own building.
Any other questions? All right, moving right along. Textbook adoption.
I have two more books for your consideration. The science department needed a little more time to look at their choices. Due to the change in our biology sequence because of the biology honors, there was a need to look into a new textbook. This is the book that they've brought forward that they believe will, is comprehensive and will meet the needs of the curriculum as a resource. Campbell, some of us might remember when we were in high school, high school, same biology type of book that we might have had. But this is, we did not previously offer this course, so this is why we are in need of new text for this. It does have an online component. It has an extensive online. It has a CD-ROM in the back that every textbook comes with. So there are videos and other opportunities for kids. But definitely, it's called "The Online Pieces: Mastering Biology." And once you log into that, every student gets an ID number, and they basically can get the entire text. But important to have these in the classrooms and accessible for kids. So this is for honors biology, level one.
So level two will not use that book?
They will, no, they'll use the, they'll continue with the same book. We have not bought biology books in quite some time, so they wanted to move with this book first before purchasing for the biology two. So that's what they're looking at here. The second text is for environmental science. This is for environmental science, too. Again, first year that we're offering level two in environmental science. We've had AP environmental science for a long time. This also has an online component to it, but also offers all of the information necessary that's covered through the curriculum. And looking to purchase a smaller amount of these. We don't have as many students. This is an elective course at the high school, but really feel like this meets the needs of our course that we'll be offering next year. So I'll have these available for you, for your review. You can send them around now if you're interested, and we'll come back next June 11th for your approval.
Right. We'll be adopting that.
Oh, MP3 player, too, on these. There's all kinds of stuff. Yeah.
So.
So, a lot of ways to utilize the text.
Sections.
Of this one?
No.
Sections, we're going to run about, let me do my math, about eight sections.
Okay.
Something about the cover of that book.
It was looking at you, huh?
The lemur.
A lemur. Yeah, something about that would definitely keep me up at night. All right, so June 11th, we'll be adopting.
Correct.
Policy. All right, very good. Any other questions? Seeing none. We are our second public audience, seeing none in the public audience. I will entertain a, I'm sorry, seeing none in the public audience. You just blend in so, so well. Lisa, would you like to address the board?
Thanks.
Our next meeting will be Tuesday, June 11th, here in this conference room at 7:00 PM. And with that, I would like to have a motion to adjourn. It's removed. Second?
Second.
Alligator? Motion passes. Thank you. Good evening.